So, good morning, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Concord Historical Commission on February 24th, 9:30 via Zoom. We really only have a couple of issues on the agenda. Principal one is the Wright Tavern public access feature associated with the preservation restriction. I think Anne had sent you all a memo along with the language that Chessie primarily really helped us work up. So I'd like to kind of open it up to comment from all of you so that we could then, I hope, be able to take a vote. We are very concerned that we get this preservation restricted onboard and recorded Middlesex Registry of Deeds because things are moving quickly. Sort of the design ideas of the Wright Tavern folks. Last night, there was a meeting of the HDC. I know Nancy Ryan and Nancy Frizzella Lee were able to observe. Nancy and I raised objections. I'm not sure what Ryan or Nancy Frizzella Lee really feel, but I just think it's really important. We get this thing in place. So with that introduction, I'd like to open it up for comment about the language on public access. Sure, Mike, you start. Yes, thank you.
No, no, I mean, it would seem to me that if you have, you, I'm sure Nancy was involved and everybody else and Francesca and the planning department, you have structured a document that you want us to vote on that I'm assuming meets the criteria of all of you and the planning department, correct?
Yeah, yes, I mean, you know, Mike, as you know, we've gotten so much pushback from the Wright Tavern folks because they don't want to be boxed into a number of days.
Right.
We appreciate that, but we also feel we have got to kind of defend the rights of the public in Concord to have access to the building. So this was the best effort to guarantee on a yearly basis that we review that they have to submit.
Right.
And I also, the idea, we're supposed to do this with every preservation restriction, once a year, evaluate them.
Right. But I know Nancy articulated a very passionate approach about public access. And has the Wright Tavern group, Tom Wilson, et cetera, taken that into consideration? Are they reflecting on it? Are they discussing it? Are they discussing it with you or the planning department?
Oh, sorry.
Well, go ahead.
I think they've reflected on it. I think it's, I thought originally the mutually negotiated or mutually agreed upon language was good, but I've become convinced that they're seriously worried about this. But if you look at their plans, they're definitely planning on more. So I'm in favor of this at this point in time.
I mean, I think we should move ahead quickly to, you know, advance something. But I'm hopeful that at some point this will be modified or an addendum with what you presented, Nancy.
Well, it was in that, I think this is okay because it does have that annual review required.
Yeah.
And then it's partly on the Historical Commission to follow through on that review. It used to be that the National Park Service attended to periodic review of the Wright Tavern. And the commission is supposed to do that on their other, the other restrictions that they hold. So I think it's really most important that the commission now and in the future really attend to that responsibility of reviewing all of our preservation restrictions, and there are several.
Could I jump in here and just ask a question related to the use of the language of review? Am I right to think that by review, we mean the annual physical inspection of the property and the fact that all of the preservation restriction covenants are being adhered to? We're not actually annually reviewing the preservation restriction itself. I assume that that's the case, but I just wanted to clarify that the word review is coming up a few times.
Right. No, you're right. Once this is signed, it goes to the Registry of Dees and it's recorded. I defer to Chessie about that, but my understanding, we don't review the preservation restriction. It's the property and our obligations that are enumerated within the restriction language. Right?
Including reviewing access.
Right, I thought what Nancy was referring to was that first sentence where the parties would discuss public access on an annual basis, but then there's the fallback provision in the event that there's no agreement.
Yeah.
But the restriction, the preservation, the document itself, we don't review. I mean, we hold this, Ryan, on.
Once it's signed.
Once it's signed, yeah. And we're not there yet. The other thing, just want to explain, if we agree with this language, then it goes back to the Wright Tavern folks. They have not seen this yet. They have to agree to it.
And I'm assuming Tom Wilson or any of his associates are not on this meeting right now. Is that correct? Are they here now? No, okay. Well, I think we need, it sounds like we need to move forward quickly. So I think we should move forward quickly, obviously.
Do you want to vote or a motion, Melissa? Or are there other comments, maybe?
Yeah, Nancy Frizzella Lee, do you have any comments or are you?
Yeah, I don't really have anything further to add. My husband is a lawyer. He looked it over and he thought it was okay. Yeah, I just, I was wondering about what happens if, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm sorry. What happened? What would happen if? Yeah, no, I'm just gonna leave it like that.
Okay, so yes, so could someone make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that we vote on this and move forward.
And I second.
So all in favor, Nancy?
I.
Michael?
I.
And Melissa, I. So that's all we need because Nancy and Chessie, you are associate members. So, thank you. We've got that passed. Thank you so much. We will then, I'll talk with Anne, we'll get that over to the Wright Tavern folks. One other little quick thing, I just wanted to, I will send you what I wrote, but I hope you trust it. We needed to send a letter to Diane Proctor of the CPC and copies to the State Historic Preservation Officer that we supported the Civil War monument, that we acknowledged that it is an important historic resource in town of Concord. This is all in relation to their application for CPC funding. So I thought we'd already done it, but I hadn't. So I have done that since, so I just wanted you to know. Anne, do I have to take a vote? I don't think so.
We certainly all, I'm assuming everybody read it, right? We've all read it, right?
Well, actually, I haven't read it because I just wrote it yesterday.
Oh, you just, oh, you did.
We will send it to you, we will send it to you now. And I mean, it's basically, it's just to say to Diane, same thing that for the cemetery application.
Right.
That it's an important historic resource. It's just one of the requirements of the State Historic Preservation Officer. I didn't understand that, but apparently they are also seeking state money. So it isn't just about the CPC. I mean, I can't imagine any of you have an objection to supporting the Civil War monument.
No.
Correction. Okay.
I'd like to see the letter, though.
I will send the letter. I'm sorry.
Since I represent the commission, and probably everybody would like it.
Yeah, so Anne, can you just send the PDF version of it?
Sure, I can probably bring it up right now.
Oh, thank you. Actually, that would be better, be better than we can, thank you.
Give me a few minutes.
Probably, probably short enough.
Yeah. Well, the other, well, while she's bringing that up, I just, I would hope that all you would review the HDC's documents that they had for their meeting last night. If you haven't already, they are proposing a glass-fronted extension to the building that faces right onto Main Street for a new handicap entryway that I find very objectionable to the integrity of the building as an historic property here in Concord and particularly in Monument Square. So we really would like you to look at it. At last night's meeting, which was just a discussion, there was only maybe one sort of slight objection to the building. I mean, they had some design features, but basically, by and large, they all supported added addition of this, which would cover up three historic windows, can kind of alter the facade that faces Monument Square and downtown. So Nancy, you can speak up if you'd like, please.
Say, the other thing was that the new addition will obscure, and I'm not sure how much damage it will do, actually, to the back part of the building and the evolution of those entrances and features at the back of the building. I think Anne's agenda notes made note of that very explicitly. So Anne wrote a good two, two, two and a half page memo that it wasn't clear that the commissioners had read that memo. So we should, the information about this project is split now among three committees, and each committee seems to be getting different information. So if you guys have time to look at the CPC and HDC websites about Wright Tavern, that'd be good for us to have a more comprehensive understanding of the building and what's proposed.
I'd also, related to that, Nancy, for those who weren't on the call last night, it should be mentioned that there is going to be a public site visit, I believe, March 24th.
21st.
21st. Yeah. And I certainly am hoping to attend that because I would like to learn more about this project. And I'm hoping that the architects will be there to lead us through that because I think there are some significant questions about the ways in which this is being adjoined to the existing L and indeed to the main block on the west wall.
And that doesn't even count the interior plans for the exhibits and whatnot. And the stabilization of the structure. It's very heavy-handed treatment of the tavern.
Pocket Park and all the brick walkways. There's a lot. And that proposal that you really do need to see, and it will be helpful to see it in person with the, as you say, Ryan, with the architect. So Anne, have you found the document?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great.
It's fine. Okay, I didn't, okay, I didn't, you know, wasn't being controversial, just again. Do that, yeah. So, so, thank you very much. Anybody have any other issues? Yes, Nancy?
Can we just go back to the Wright Tavern? I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't online last night when they covered that. I came later, unfortunately. Who is the architect for that? Do you know?
Lynn Spencer's architect, his name is Doug.
Manley, Doug Manley.
Doug Manley.
Is this the first, was that the first time that you had seen those plans this week?
Yeah, well, maybe last week, but.
Well, we saw them, yeah, we looked up their current meeting documents, but yes.
I haven't been paying close enough attention because I was really, yesterday when I saw them, really shocked and surprised that they would add that. I don't understand. You know, I'll go back and look at the Zoom when, I don't know how soon the Zoom comes up or the, sorry, sorry, the YouTube recording of it, of the meeting.
I should actually be getting a link to it today, which I can send out to Bob easily. And then it will be up on YouTube, you know, in a week or so.
Okay.
It's really interesting, the way the site itself is being altered because it's in order to get an accessible entry from the street level, the sidewalk level. The earth around the foundation of the tavern has to be lowered considerably on the backside.
Which brings up archaeology. It's not clear what, for the preservation restriction, what kind of authority we have over archaeology. It's allowed, but clearly, if they're messing around with the landscape, there's, there are surely interesting information and findings that they would have on that property. So I think we need to just pay attention to that as well.
Right, I just haven't heard all the discussion about it, but I just don't see any reason to add on to it. One of our most historic and important buildings in the town. I just.
Well, okay, as Nancy points out, I mean, this is a little, it is frustrating because I wish that, you know, the CPC, the HDC, and us, we are all involved in this. I wish that they would present to all of us kind of the same thing and then tell us what, you know, parse out what we are responsible for, kind of overseeing or authorizing because this is, it's hard to keep up with them. I, you know, I always come back to the fundamental question. Two and a half years ago, I wish they had told us what their ultimate use was. We could, this would have been a much more logical process now. I feel like it's evolving in front of us and it's hard for us to keep up with them and know where they're going, why.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of information on very short order.
I have a question, and you know, again, I know a lot of you, some of you on the commission and certainly, I mean, I've lived in Concord for 23 years. I lived in Lincoln 20. All of you know, is Ryan on this right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Ryan, are you on part of the Wright Tavern Committee right now?
I wouldn't say I'm on the committee. So I'm on a very particular commission called the Scholars Advisory Group that I think together with Bob Gross and Dennis Fiore and Forbes, maybe one or two others, David Wood, we've been solicited for advising mostly on, not the structures, which are of great interest to me, but mostly on the interior content that's going to be presented as part of their public museum.
And Peter Nobily, he is, it seems like to be directly involved in this right now, is that correct?
Yes, I think in his capacity as a longstanding First Parish member especially.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused because having Nancy and Melissa frustrated with the last several years of planning, programming, whatever, on this Wright Tavern, it doesn't make sense to me as a former public official and certainly somebody who's a community activist and/or anybody involved with the commission as it relates to that Wright Tavern. I mean, none of this makes any sense to me. So what are we missing here? Why isn't there, why hasn't there been ongoing dialogue with the First Parish Church or Wright Tavern over the last two years, as you said?
But there has been, Michael. I mean, you've been, you know, I mean, you've seen what we've seen at the meetings and it's changed, evolved. We're told, you know, there's a big campaign, then there's no campaign.
Right.
So one, something we learned last night, we had heard, I think maybe the last time they presented to the Historical Commission, there was a concept of a bookstore. Well, at last night, at the most current version of the plans, there's no bookstore. But last night, we learned that there's, they're planning to have a catering kitchen in the basement where the old bakery was, which has a very important historic feature related to the bakery, not 1776. So things, things keep changing. There's a very idealistic description of what they want to do and how they're gonna do it. And now they've finally, for the first time, got some real hard, tangible plans to review. But they also are planning to, their goal is to have, basically, they presented bid documents, which they hope to go out on the street with in March.
Bid documents? These are specs, construction specs to go forward with. So I really am missing, so let me go on the record here. So I met with, again, you know my background, I was a real estate developer and had a construction company as part of it, developed about 1,000 units in Massachusetts, mostly in historic structures, the structures that were initially on the register, then were placed on the register. I met with Tom and a woman who was an attorney with him several years ago at Cafe Nera for two or three hours, talking about a number of things, one of which he referenced, he knew I received an earmark from the legislature on the restoration of the Silas Holden Farmhouse on the state police property and wanted to know how that worked, whatever. And I thought that was, you know, as a resident here and a member, I thought I would help up in any way that I could. And then he said, well, you know, we're in the early stages and we're doing A, B, and C. And I listened and I had not heard anything. Tom called me a couple of weeks ago and said, can I meet you for a cup of coffee? I said, sure. So I met him and he had in front of him some renderings, et cetera, about an access in the back and had a little overview of where they were, what they were discussing, and showed me some documents. I know Ryan's name was on it and 20 or 30 people in town who were actively involved with them in this process of defining an agenda for the restoration of the structure, the structural issues that seem to have been a problem in the last few years, and an overall plan on how to make this a venue where it would be a historic place where people would, not that it would be, it is a historic place, but open to the public on a daily, weekly, et cetera basis. And I said, oh, great. I said, you know, are you talking with all the members in town? Oh, yes, we're reaching out to everybody, et cetera. So I apologize. Again, I'm a member of the Historical Commission. I care very much about our agenda and, you know, preserving, you know, the integrity of historical structures everywhere. And I just want to make sure that it sounded to me like Tom was telling me that there's been a tremendous outreach by everybody to everybody, but I'm not hearing that right now. So I don't understand what I'm missing because I want to make sure that when Tom contacted me to talk to me about this is what we're doing and is there a way, you know, with your contacts and your background, is there a way to help? And I said, sure, I will help to restore any building in town. I want to make sure that I'm not being reached out and doing something that is a dichotomy to what our mission is here and what our role is here. So I'm somewhat confused and I apologize for that. So can somebody enlighten me?
Well, I would say join the club.
Okay.
Because, well, I would just say, my frustration is that it does seem to be constantly evolving.
Right.
And that's understandable, but if you're presenting something to us, it should not have been, it should not continue to evolve. It should be, this is what we're proposing, please respond.
Yes.
That's not how it's been presented. So I appreciate you talking to, I mean, I, you know, Tom.
But when he presented, I just want to say one thing. When he was talking with me, it sounded like he was still in the planning process. This is what we're thinking about. We ultimately need to raise X amount of dollars. What, you know, what would you do at this point? And it sounded like this was a planning process, like going through, getting everybody's input, okay? Here we are, this, where are we going with this and how do we get there? But it doesn't sound that way based on what you're saying to me right now.
Well, that's what's a little bit confusing because the plans for the Pocket Park and the back entry.
Right.
Not well-integrated with the bid documents. They're draft, they are draft, but usually you don't get presented for review with bid documents that are expected to go out in March.
Well, I just want to ask a question. Is there a way of inviting Tom and/or the people on his team to our next meeting?
I think we should go as a group to see what's proposed right now before HDC.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think some people have not really been inside Wright Tavern. So I think there was an idea, Melissa wasn't there to have a tour of the Historical Commission with knowledgeable people. Tom is the idealist here.
Yeah.
And he has wonderful, great ideas, expansive ideas. And.
But I do know, I do know that Francesca and I visited the Wright Tavern with him back some time ago and I thought all the members were invited on a couple of days. Heather had set it up and that we all went. Maybe not the new members, maybe not Nancy at that time because she wasn't on the committee or Ryan, but I know that we went and my sense is if Ryan's on some documents that they're showing me that he is familiar with the Wright Tavern and he's been in it, et cetera.
Yeah. But I went, I think, remember, we went some time ago. Since then, their plans have changed and maybe solidified? I don't know, to change. So they did offer, provide a tour if we could. It's pretty hard to get everybody together, I think, during the day because you all have very different schedules and demands, but they have offered that.
Yeah, but the fact that Francesca and I went at that time, is this in concert with that or is this something?
I think this is, these are different. This is different.
Okay, okay.
Iteration, right, Nancy?
Yeah, I think we need to set this up right away. It sounds critical.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael, I'm just gonna jump in and I think that we should definitely make a visit. You know, my concern from the beginning, I mean, I was invited onto their project specifically for my sort of more substantive background in political ideas and how those would be represented in terms of 18th century history. But I've been increasingly concerned, actually, all the stuff about the exterior and the addition is all very new. I'm learning about this like everybody else. My concern from the beginning has been the interior fabric. The building has really seen a lot of.
Whoops. You're breaking up, Ryan.
Uses that have transformed 19th. Hey, that, I think that even though our current focus at the Historical Commission has been on the changes to the exterior structure with the new information we're learning about the addition, I think it's very important for us to take a visit inside because the interior fabric is really precious of the little that really remains for the 18th century, but even the 19th century additions. So I think that, and I think that Tom, from everything I know, would welcome an opportunity for us to see what's there, but I think that that should also happen relatively soon in addition to that HDC site visit.
Yeah, and if you want to see the, if you want to see the current thinking about the tavern, those documents are on the CPC website. And they really have made a huge quantum leap from, you know, the very generalized lofty, idealistic concepts to what's, what I think, from what I can see and what I've learned from other historical architects is that this is going to require the demolition of a lot of ceilings and floorboards and exterior fixes to the roof, the gutters, other things, lots of steel. I think that if you take down the ceilings and put ceilings back up, that also allows for recessed lighting for exhibits and whatnot. We just don't know. We don't know what those finishes are yet, so. And, Michael, you should look because you're very familiar with construction projects.
Yeah, and again, I want to give all the facts. So at that meeting, he said to me, you know, what can, how can you help? I said, well, look, I said, you know, there's A, B, and C. I said, look, I feel very strongly that Carissa de Mori at Historic New England is one of the preeminent historic preservation, construction people that I've interacted with in the last decade. And I said, you know, it would be good, and again, I'm thinking this is in concert with all the dialogue that's going on because I saw Ryan's name on this. When I saw Ryan's name on this, and all due respect, Ryan, I'm not saying because your name was on it, but I saw it, I saw, it looks like everybody's talking to everybody. I said, well, look, why don't I reach out to Historic New England? Let's get Carissa. I said, well, look, why don't I reach out to Historic New England? Let's get Carissa here because I was concerned about the glass elevation in the back that I saw her. And I said, let's get her perspective. But I had a sense that, again, I go back, that I saw Ryan's name on this. So it seemed to me, well, if Ryan's name on it, then certainly Nancy and Melissa must be all in dialogue together. And I thought, well, I guess we're moving in this direction, but it seems to me that, that these, these concerns are very valid and we need to be very proactive at this point and as you both are, as you all are, but certainly as you both are.
Well, when, maybe we should focus on a date for, for, for our tour. And when people are generally available, I, I would say that I'm, I'm, I have, I probably have one of the most flexible schedules here, even though I'm busy. So.
But seeing, seeing that, that, seeing that this is critical, I think.
But Ryan, Ryan might, Ryan might have absolute times that he's otherwise occupied or, or other people as well.
Yeah, so.
Nancy too probably has other commitments. I don't, I don't know, but are there screen out times and days? Jessie, Jessie, this is just going to come when she can.
I would ask Ryan, are you, you're back teaching? Are you still there?
Uh, yes, I'm still here.
Uh, so I'm, I'm just wondering, is a Saturday morning a possibility?
Saturdays in general are better than other dates. I should, I should give the warning that I'm about to be on the road almost every week through May after mid-March. So if we're going to do something, it would be better to do that sooner rather than later.
Well, I'm mindful, Nancy, you're gone March 4th?
I'm, I'm gone from the 3rd to the 12th. But I, I could come back.
Well. I, I, I'm leaving on Monday and I will be back to the 4th. And then I'm back.
I could say we, we at BC Spring Break is, I think, the 4th through the 11th, whatever that week is. I'll have maximal flexibility there, including during the week. So if there's something that works in there, I would do whatever I had to to make it happen, make a visit happen.
That's right. When you're gone, Nancy, though.
I know, but, but other people, I think, I think other people need to see the tavern. I've been in several times and know it fairly well.
Well, okay, so Nancy, you could probably go again. I mean, I'm sure you could, Tom would take you through any time you probably.
Maybe.
Oh, I think so. Well, so if I try, the 4th is Saturday?
So trying to schedule a site, site visit to the tavern.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I missed that for a.
How are your Saturdays?
Yeah, so.
How are your Saturdays?
Sorry?
What are Saturdays like or, or during the week? So Saturday, the 4th, 5th? Sometimes the week of the 6th or the 11th. What, Jessie, do you have days, times that work better?
Um, usually Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings. I just have one baby. Two.
Well, it's not never too soon to teach him about historic preservation.
That's right, never too early.
Yeah, Bo would love, Bo would love it.
That's right. That's right.
Bo would love it.
So Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings are when the two older boys are in school, but I can also, if it's you know, out far enough that week, I can also coordinate with Simon and he can likely cover for me. So if there's a time that's most convenient for the broader group, then I'll just do my best to join.
So what about the week of, in March 6th through the 11th, Monday would be the 6th, 6th or 8th? Something like that. I, you know, we just have to coordinate it with Tom and whomever he
Yeah.
proposes. And then Nancy will figure, well, maybe, maybe you and I, you could go this next coming week.
Maybe.
Is that same reasonable, folks?
Yes, yes.
And so Jessie, sometime like around 9:00, 9:30, 9:30?
9:30, that'd be great. I'm, my boys are at Milldam, so I would just walk right over.
Okay.
10 feet from there.
Okay. So I would say 9:30 on the 6th or 8th, I'm going to talk to Anne and we'll talk to Tom.
Does that still work for Ryan? It's vacation week, right?
Well, that was what he said. Ryan, are you still there?
Vacation week, yeah, I think.
Ryan?
Yeah, yes, I'm here. I, I've just pulled over to look at my calendar. This is.
No accidents, please.
I think the 6th through the 8th is probably going to be, I, I'm going to make it work. I think either of those will work.
Okay. So I will, I'm going to ask Tom Wilson right away, as soon as we hang up from this and then get back to all of you. And then, and I, and I will suggest to him, Nancy, that you will reach out to him.
Yeah. I, I just think it's important that people take a look and try to understand what, what they're able to from the documents on this CPC site.
Yeah.
And one of the things I'm, I have suggested privately to the Chair of CPC is that we need a peer review of the plans. Because I think they will say that they're going to take every care and do everything possible and do the minimal approach and Ryan has some contacts with historical architects and so do I and seems, seems questionable in some ways. So um, yes, I'll check, I'll check in with him.
Okay. Um, yeah, because I'm sorry you won't be, because you, I mean.
It's, but it's, I don't, I don't know how you're going to get everybody else there, though. So.
Okay.
Time, time's moving along quickly. So.
All right. So we will try to do that. Are, is there any other business that people would like to bring up? Otherwise I think the meeting can be terminate, ended. I don't have to call for a vote. I always do, but I don't need to. So, so I, Anne and I will reach out to Tom right away. And again, ask you, like Nancy suggests, please look at the documents that are on the CPC webpage as well as which on the HDC about what's being planned. Thank you all. So we will convene.
And I have just one little PS. I'm really worried because the plans indicate in a lot of places where work is being done, especially if things are opened up, that they all have to be uh, there's no specific treatment that doesn't, but there's the requirement that the engineer approves. So that, in my experience, creates a lot of uncertainty for a bidder on contracts because there's not the level of detail known, often a problem in historic structures, but that's, there's a lot of, of notes to that effect that and it also gives a lot of authority to the engineer.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Well, thank you all very, very much for making time to meet this morning and voting on this public access and we will continue. Thank you. All right. Bye-bye.
Good to see everybody.
Bye, Bo.
Thank you all. Thanks, Anne, too.